All meetings are worth a standing pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands what makes underground the invisible for the meaning of justice.
We have roll call.
Ryan?
Here.
Angela Pois, absent, McCarthy is absent, Kirstensen?
Here.
Manigan?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Penning?
Here.
Okay, do we have announcements and correspondence?
No, no, I'm sure there's none.
Alright, then I look to the approval of the August 3rd, 2022 Planning and Zoning Board meeting minutes as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Okay.
Ryan?
Yes.
Kirstensen?
Yes.
Manigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Penning?
Yes. Okay, at this time, do we have any public comments? And then, all business?
There's no business.
Okay.
No praise.
Okay, then, we're going to move on to PCB 22-09. I will be recusing myself from discussion and a vote. All those that would like to speak tonight, would you please stand and be sworn in?
Anyone that wants to speak for or against the petition at any time during the hearing, should stand up.
You need to be sworn if you do think that you're going to speak. It's better at this point in time just to be sworn. Thank you. Madam Chair, would you like to do the honors? Would you want me to?
I prefer you, sir.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand and prepare to be sworn. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yeah.
Thank you. And let's put on the record too, Madam Chair, that when there was a call for public comment, that no one answered.
They don't?
Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Garrigan?
Yes, thank you. You have a shared person. That the record reflected, as the court appeared, they heard in accordance with statute, all political awarenesses. This matter, Madam Chair, a person comes before you this evening for a special use for a PUD property, it's company known as 466 West Olive Rock 173. Specifically, the applicant is seeking a special use for an Antioch Recovery Club, again, which is a 12-step program, which is currently located right across from the metro station in downtown Antioch. The applicant has an opportunity to basically proceed with the purchase of the property, company known as 466 West Olive Rock 173. As we speak, this property is owned as R3, which is a R3 residential. Therefore, the applicant does require a special use for a PUD, a recovery club, a 12-step program is now identified as a permitted use in the R3 district. So the applicant is seeking, again, for the record, a special use to be allowed to operate their proposed use in a, what was previously constructed as a religious assembly or church. Again, the club, just for the record, want to provide some background information. I believe the applicant is here this evening and can provide additional illumination, additional detail as it relates to the operations of their 12-step recovery club facility. But for the record, based on the information provided by staff, the applicant is providing a 12-step program. There are approximately 18 meetings a week, and again, the applicant wants to correct me, they'll have an opportunity to correct me based on the information that I've received. For the applicant, there'll be approximately 18 meetings per week. Specifically, the latest meeting will be at 8:00 PM. That meeting would last one hour, so the operations of this 12-step program would cease at 9 o'clock. And those late evening, 8 o'clock meetings, I believe, are limited. Again, generally, typically, the types of meetings would be between 20 and 25 people. So based on the representation, the applicant, for the record, the maximum number of people which would attend an individual 12-step meeting would be approximately 25 people. Again, that's not typical, but the maximum, based on their current experience, based on their operations, would be 25 people. Again, there will be meetings on the weekend, on Saturdays and Sunday mornings, at 8 o'clock in the morning, and there would be one, I believe, Sunday meeting at 6:30, at 6:30. So that just provides some parameters. I'm sure there'll be some legitimate concerns about the operations of this 12-step program. So those general parameters would generally outline the general operations. And again, the applicants here provide some additional illumination or additional details as it relates to the proposed recovery club operations. As you well know, this not-for-profit recovery club has been operating in Antioch at the current facility on Depot Street for over a decade. And again, I'll provide the applicant some, an opportunity to outline to the planning commission their current operations. But as outlined in statute four, this does require a special use. So in accordance with section dash, section 10 dash 2 dash 12, there are certain finds of facts that must be demonstrated by applicant before any type of recommendation can be made. So first thing, as you well know, we also look at the context of the property, what surrounds the property. Does this propose special use? Would it have a negative or negative impact on the surrounding properties as it relates to their required enjoyment, as it relates to their property values, as it relates to their ability to enjoy their neighborhood? So it's imperative that we look at the properties surrounding this. Well, as you can see, the context map behind me, to the north of the property, there, currently, there's the cemetery on one side, and on the south is Lake Antioch. To the east is a residential area across 173. As you all know, there's a historic Antioch, specifically Harding Street, Spafford Street, are residential streets which are zone residential. And again, on the other side is the cemetery. So as you can see, three sides of the property is either bordered by cemetery or Lake Antioch. There is one single-family home, I believe, on the other side of 173, to the south, adjacent to Lake Antioch. But generally, 173 separates this proposed facility. A little bit of the history of the facility, I believe this church goes back, I believe it was constructed, block packed in the 1960s. For many years, it was, I believe, a Baptist church. Before that, I believe it was a Christian Scientist church, if I'm correct. But for many years, I believe for over a decade, the property's been vacant. So there's been no current use of the property for many, many years. So the applicant has an opportunity to proceed with the purchase of this property for the use of their recovery club. So I wanted to go very briefly through the findings of facts that's required for a special use and kind of outline staff's perspective. As it were, first finding fact, this special use would not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of property in the immediate areas, and for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish property values with the neighborhood. So again, the property for many, many years was used as a religious assembly, as a church. So I'll kind of go into the actual size of the church or chapel, and we can discuss as it relates to parking and traffic, which I'll cover. Again, the applicant's seeking to use this existing church building, which, based on staff's analysis, is approximately 3,600 square feet. The property includes chapel, offices, and a meeting room, and a kitchen in the basement. Again, the applicant's requesting to use what was previously the chapel for meetings. Again, as I've already outlined, those meetings will have somewhere between 20 to 25 individuals at each meeting, again, a maximum of 25 individuals, based on the information provided by the applicant. So as you all know, in accordance with parking standards, we do not have specific parking standard for a recovery club, or this type of, specifically not-for-profit. So this is up for discussion. What staff did was really use analogous of a religious assembly, which I think in reality will be actually probably higher with regards to parking requirements than what the applicant's proposing. Now, I'll expand on that. So if you use the actual parking standards which are required for a church, or synagogue, or religious assembly, specifically, we require one space for every four seats. Based on staff's analysis, by specifically looking at chapel and existing 16 pews, there's approximately a capacity of 80 people for the chapel space. Again, I have identified the applicants, we identified a maximum of 25 people. Using those 80 people, based on the parking requirements of a religious assembly, there will be a requirement for 20 spaces, and one handicap space. The applicant's actual proposed parking lot, as reflected on the exhibit behind me, incorporates existing spaces for 25 vehicles. So using a fairly liberal parking analysis, again, based on representation of the applicant, that a maximum of 25 people would be using this facility for the recovery club, there appears to be sufficient parking for this proposed use. With regards to actual access, I'm sure there'll be concern about where is the access? Well, as you know, there's currently no access to this property on Route 173. The applicant is not proposing an additional access. In fact, I dot the property in all likelihood not approve additional access. Access is off Harding Street, on the other side, I guess the west side, Route 173 on Harding Street. The applicant is not proposing in any way to change the existing access point into this, on this property. So the actual predominant traffic pattern would continue to be on Route 173. Most traffic would be coming through Route 173. Obviously, as most truck access to Harding Street, obviously go to the west. So as it relates to traffic, we would submit respectfully that there would probably be less intense traffic, traffic on this both site than what would be permitted by right, which would be a religious assembly. Again, as I've already identified, the church at one time would have allowed up to 80 people. I believe at one point in the history of this property, there was a much more intense use of the property when it was a religious institute, religious assembly. So there's nothing specifically indicate that this proposed use as 12-step program with this limited schedule would have any direct negative impact, anything more than what would be permitted as it relates to religious assembly in the property. The actual proposed use is less intense. Based on the analysis provided, information provided by the applicant, it appears that the actual number of people using this facility would be substantially less than it was built for capacity for as a religious assembly. Now, we would respectfully submit that this proposed use would be less intense than what the building was built for, as staff's identified. So we would submit that the applicant has met the first standard that's required for a special use. The second standard is establishment of special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvements of adjacent properties. Again, we will submit the approval of proposed use. We have no impact on the existing character of the surrounding neighborhood. As you, as you well know, as you can see with the exhibit arrow behind me, the area along Harding Street, adjacent to this property largely has very, very, very limited number of residences on it. Again, it's bordered by existing cemetery on two sides, and obviously across 173, Lake Antioch. There, as I've already identified, there's one, I believe, one single-family home on 173, but the vast majority of the single-family homes would be on the other side of Route 173, across from this street, on Harding Street, Spafford, Victoria. So we would submit that this proposed use would have minimal negligible impacts on the existing character of the single-family homes on Harding Street, or Victoria, or Spafford, based on the distance, based on the separation of major materials separating this use from that, from that residential neighborhood. As I've already identified, the dominant amount of traffic pattern, we believe, will be you, Route 173 will be used. There is some limited potential for potentially somebody coming from the neighborhood of 170, Harding Street. But again, we believe the most direct route is using Route 173. The best access into Harding Street would be using 173. So as we've already identified, we think this proposed use will have minimal impact on the residential neighborhood to, to the east. Of course, any potential impact on those single-family homes are all legitimate concerns. Based on staff's analysis, based on the previous history of this property as a religious assembly, we do not believe there will be a negative impact on the long-term development trend of this property. So with that, staff, based on our analysis, the applicant has met the second finding of fact that's required for a special use. So at this point, staff is comfortable making a recommendation, favorable recommendation of this proposed use for a special use for a PUD to allow the 12-step recovery club. I've outlined my, my staff report in motion with our two standard stipulations that we incorporate all special uses. With that, I'll conclude my staff report. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Garrigan. Mr. Ryan?
No.
Mr. McCarthy?
I apologize for being late. My job is up in Lake Chanda these days. Takes a little longer to get back here. The only question I have is hours of operation. For a religious assembly, usually it's, I believe, mostly during the day. And hours of operation for the 12-step recovery program, I'm sure there's some business during the day, but it isn't more done after hours, work hours, and in the evening.
Okay, maybe if you profit to allow Mr. Lam or the applicant to actually provide the information directly, that'd be fine, instead of having it second-hand from staff. Sure. So the applicant's actually here.
All right, this is quite good to do. Thank you, Madam Chair, and board members. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate you having us here. Sir, thank you very much for the help of this. Something to help, I appreciate it.
Mr. Lam, excuse me, could you state your address, your name and address?
My name, William R. Lam, 40510 North Bald Eagle Road, Antioch, Illinois 6002.
Yeah, as a general matter, we use it as a village as well. For anyone who's seen our, our tremendously exciting village board meetings, we normally ask for people's addresses. And that's just to be able to get in touch with you if we need to. If you have any questions or any comments, to be able to have a good discourse rapport between the village staff, consultants, attorneys, and you, the residents, who we all work for. So thanks. So if you just state your address, we need to know that'd be awesome.
Thank you. For the record, I'm the president of the Antioch Recovery Club. I'm the board president. The whole board is here, as well as some other members of the community for our support. Question on hours. We don't open and close at a certain time. We have meetings at certain times. I'll give you an example. I have a schedule, if you'd like to see it. The earliest, we have a meeting in the morning at 7:00 AM on Fridays. Meetings are at 6:00, 6:30, 7:00 in the evening. The latest, as Mr. Garrigan indicated, was 8:00. Generally, they're out of there by about 9:30. So it's not just open the door and anybody can come in. It's scheduled meeting times is when the building is going to be open.
Sure.
Do we have adequate lighting for, you know, because it's kind of switching for like nine hours for the parking lot? I have not been up there tonight.
There are, I think there are several wall packs, actually to the building itself, but I think that's actually a good point. I'd be more than happy to add a third stipulation to work with staff on any lighting. They're generally not proposing to make any changes, so it's technically not a formal, slightly review, but that's actually the lighting. I believe there's one or two wall packs on, will be the, I think will be the eastern elevation facing the parking lot. But that's a fair point. I can work with the applicant. I'm making sure there's sufficient lighting, if not lighting standard, at least additional wall pack to make sure there's enough illumination, obviously during the winter months.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. And again, staying within our standards, you know, dark skies are important, so we, if we are having any outfalls, it's a 90-degree downlighting, so it doesn't illuminate the skies and affect other people. So that's the only, absolutely the only question I have about this scenario.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCurry. Mr. Ms. Kirstensen?
No questions.
Ms. Manigan?
No questions.
Mr. Turner?
Question. Are we gonna let everyone kind of talk a little bit here, if there's any comments?
If they'd like to.
And I'm sure Mike would comment on this as well, but governing, oftentimes we deal with rezonings or variances here. This is a special use permit. I know this laws of the state of Illinois under Clarion and its progeny, it is a different type of purity. It's more quasi adjudicated. It's real fancy words, but it's more like a trial than it is a legislative act, like a rezoning or a variance. So we will, again, Mike, feel free, we will ask the petitioner and/or his counsel to make a little bit of a statement about what they're trying to do, put it on the record, and then everyone will have the opportunity to ask questions of that person or the village, to ensure that we have a proper record under Clarion and Clarion and its progeny, which is the other case that came after. We just want to make sure that the proper procedures and laws are followed with regards to the processing of this special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So I will have like four questions later then. One comment, so I did just drive up there tonight, actually. It's, I used to ride my bike up there when I was a kid. It is dark. It will be definitely, if this were to go forward, some, you know, some lighting to make it a safe environment. That said, that brings in to some, some other other potential concerns. It's not just two, three houses that are around there. It kind of goes up Osmond. It's, maybe a lot of this building, so a bit of, you know, area up there. So just food for thought, but I'd like to hear more definitely, so.
Sure. Any other questions or? I would like to mention that, Mr. Garrigan, indicated the maximum of 25 people. When we spoke, generally, the regular meetings attend between 10 and 25 people. Saturday nights, we do have family night, where family comes and listens to a speaker, and there'll be more than 25 people. There could be up to 50 people at one of those, one of those events, but it's all, you know, families. And we make no more noise than a church. Am I done?
Does the petitioner have anything else to say or put on the record or discuss with regards to the application? Mr. Garrigan did a very comprehensive job there. I'm not just complimenting him because he did, we worked together, but he did a very nice, comprehensive job about what we're looking at tonight. But is there anything else that you or anyone from, one from your group or your counsel have to say with regards to the factors for the special use permit and/or prosecution or advocacy or for your application?
Well, I would like to mention that I have a letter that I can provide from Mary Leonard for Religious Education, a former religious education director at St. Peter. They've been holding 12-step recovery meetings there since mid-'60s, and they haven't had an issue. We've been in the building over here by the Depot train station for 12 years. We've had, we've had a few calls for minor intoxication, a gas smell. I ran some reports this morning. There really hasn't, we haven't had issues with them. The police are very friendly with us. They know that we're helping people. There's a lot of, a lot of heroin problem right now, and these young people are coming to us looking for calls to help. So we have been a, been a remarkable help to the community, and we'd like to continue to do that. We think we can do that. We want to have our own home. It's nice renting the building. We have, and the building's very nice and long. It's been great, but we'd like to have our own permanent house. And with that, any board members would like to say a few words? It's all yours.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Dandy, and my address is 2528 Hamilton Drive, Lindenhurst. I just wanted to say that I started coming to the ARC years ago for help, for me, for one of my kids that was struggling. And I'm very thankful that this has been here and hoping we can make a home of our own. There are so many people, whether they're kids, there's many professionals, doctors, nurses, lawyers, police officers, people that come for help. And like Bill said, I'd say the latest right now that were there is 9:30 after meeting ends. Our goal and hope is that people learn more about us and come for help, and there's all different kinds of meetings there. So again, it not only helps people struggling, but their families. And that's really what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcelle Matthews, address 39495 North Circle Avenue in Antioch. What Kathleen was referring to is, like Ellen on meetings, everybody's very familiar with them, and the Antioch Recovery Club truly offers those. But what Kathleen has been a part of them, what I have been involved in since the ARC opened November 6th, 2010, is families anonymous. So as much as we offer a 12-step program for addicts, alcoholics, who are not, we have helped poor family members of those struggling with the disease of addiction. And that's where I met Kathleen, and that's so, and that is one of our meetings where surely if any of you have a loved one or know someone who struggles with the disease of addiction, you'd be welcome into our meeting, and we would help you learn how to cope regardless of what they do. So their program is the one that I attend. I have been attending for 12 years, and it's not just, it's for everyone, anyone that has a loved one that struggles. So there's other groups as well, I guess is was my point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Paul Hapip, 7804, 334th Avenue, early Villascon. The beginning of all this was, we've had AA meetings here since the '50s, mid-'60s. But we had young people coming to AA meetings that were, you're right. Yeah, same as the purpose. People in those meetings said, well, if you're not involved, you can stay here. That particular young girl died a week there. And that year, 2008, I believe, on I, we had seven deaths in this community. Of young people. And that was the impetus for us founding any meetings. It was at the Open Arms Mission, the food thing. And we met in their lobby for two years. And eventually, there was donations, and we wanted to have our own permanent place, well, renting a place, to have our own location. And that's when we finally got to move into the strip mall across the train station. It's a great satisfaction. I'm working with a young boy right now. He's 21 years old. I didn't get here for three more decades after his age. But, you know, we can turn this around early on. And, yeah, so now it's, the chance has come up, and we have significant backing to actually buy and continue to work, something like that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name is Katie Angel, 217 East Grand Avenue, Lake Villa, and I want to add one thing. Bill and I have worked together for many, many years, and one of the programs that has been especially appreciated and unusual is Adult Children Alcoholics, ACOA meetings, which helps people that were raised by alcoholics understand and deal with their particular issues. And I have referred many, many people to that particular group, and it's been unbelievably beneficial to them. Thank you. Thank you. Oh. I own Blundy Families, which is a counseling agency, and I've done that for about twenty years, so, you know, Bill, about twenty years, you know?
Anyone else?
So, again, the time is approximately seven?
Seven-thirty?
Time is approximately seven-thirty. I've already stated this once. But pursuant to Illinois law, does anyone have any question with regards to anyone who's given testimony here tonight or the village? Going once? Did somebody want to say something?
Ryan?
Really, really quick.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Garrigan, for your summary. I just want everyone to know that my office, I, my name is Brian Rackey. I'm a real estate attorney. I can provide a residential address if you'd like it. Would probably be more appropriate for the record would be my office address, which is three thirty West Terracotta Avenue, Sweet D in Crystal Lake. My office number is eight four seven eight one three six zero one one. I am here on behalf of the sellers or current owners of the property. So, if anybody has any questions for the current owners or for counsel of the current owners, I would be happy to answer any questions. I would be representing the sellers if the special use permit is granted, and we do have a real estate contract that is pending, which is contingent on the special use permit being granted. So, that's pretty much all I have, is let everyone know I'm here to answer questions if anybody has any. And if my, my personal opinion means anything, I believe that, that the proposal meets the standards for the special use permit, and I believe that the proposed, you know, the proposal will be good for the surrounding community and surrounding home values.
Thank you, Mr. Andy.
Going twice? Approximately seven-thirty, no one has asked Madam Chair to essentially cross-examine any of the testimony given here tonight. I have nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, do you have anything for that?
No.
Mr. McCarty?
Just a few general comments. I think what you guys are doing is fabulous for the community and for the area, for Antioch in general. I've personally witnessed a few of my kids' friends and other young children through the high school in the area that have fought with addiction, heroin most recently, and that's obviously devastating to everybody in the family, you know, the people who are dealing with the addiction. You're doing a great job. I've heard nothing but good things from the community and from the surrounding areas about your stewardship towards your helping people with the addiction, and I appreciate it.
Ms. Karstensen? Ms. Manigan?
There's no other than I agree with, Commissioner McCarty?
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
I have a couple more. I did ask a couple questions here. So, again, thank you guys for working here. I think it's amazing. I agree with all the commissioners here. So, how about maybe this is being better for Mr. Garrigan, so, Michael, did we reach out to the surrounding community just to, I saw the sign when I pulled in there today, but do we go any form that's around there? Do we?
Right, we, you know, in accordance with state statute, we did, all the applicant was requiring forward notices to all the properties within twenty feet. So, I did have a chance to talk to several residences who did call me, and they're obviously not here this evening. I don't believe they're here, but they, I did have discussions with neighbor, neighbors, so I know they did receive notice. So, again, notice was sent out to all the properties within two hundred and fifty feet, layer feet.
Okay, cool. All right, sounds good. And then, I saw in your, your write-up here that there, at this time, there is, there is no plan to have anyone be staying there overnight or sleeping at the, at the locations there, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
That would, that would not be permitted in terms of the special use. So, when we draft the word, it's, we'll make sure that there's no residential purpose use of the property.
Okay.
So, it does become a, you know, facility for.
Just wanted to make sure that that was stated. Okay. And then, last thing I had is just, there is going to have to be a lighting element there, and just knowing the area pretty well. So, if you, if you look to the north there, you know, Osborne Street goes up, you, you're going to have full visibility of that entire area there. And then, obviously, there's the home directly across the street, and then adjacent kitty corner, and then the one south of Harden there as well. That's out of Harden is, there's four lots there. So, I mean, you're looking at potentially four homes being built there as well. So, I know it sounds like that there's maybe only one or two, but there is an impact there if all of a sudden you light a thing up like the Christmas tree up top just to be safe, which I for support being safe, just food for thought. And there might be an element that we would be able to look at, you know, extra offering of screening, what have you.
Yeah, I work with the applicant. If wall packs can't address it, then there has to be a lighting standard. There may have to be some additional landscaping.
Yes.
As you know, our requirement, our photometric requirement, not only we have a photometric limitation, but obviously you can't, we have a prohibition where you, where you're not supposed to be receive the light source. So, there'll have to be a fully screened, fully enclosed, the natural lighting fixture will be fully enclosed if a scanner is used.
Understood. Okay. That's all I had.
Are you asking for that as a condition?
We do.
The residential, right? We have third stipulation. It's in there. The applicant will work with.
Oh, the lighting's in there, the street has, or stipulation for residential, no residential?
Then, yes, that we did too.
All right, just wanted to make sure, yeah, we're all talking on the sacred. That doesn't matter.
There is a, a large row of arborvitus on the north side of the property that separates pretty good the, the area. And it is up on a hill, so it's, it is on higher, which would have to be taken into account for the lighting standards that we deal with.
Exactly. That's a unique piece of problem.
Just as long as, just as long as staff is aware of it and it's part of the conditions, I'm pretty, pretty good with, with that.
Yeah, we'll try to see what we can do with wall packs, which will have a minimal impact versus lighting standard, but we'll, we'll work with the applicant.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Then, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion and we approve PZB twenty-two oh nine with the fourth stipulations.
Mr. Ryan?
Do you want to do?
Can we just clarify for the motion what the fourth stipulation is? I have the requirements of village engineer, compliance with the requirements of the Antioch Fire Protection District, compliance with the lighting standards, and the fourth is?
Non-resident.
Non-resident.
Member Ryan?
Okay, all right, yes?
McCarty?
Yes.
Karstensen?
Yes.
Manigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Anne Henning?
And Upstate. All right, with that, I would like a motion to adjourn.
To move.
That's it?